I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of May 3rd, 2018, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Muratato?
Here.
Trustee Podeck?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since today is National Day of Prayer, we've invited Pastor Cass from Family and Faith Church to start off our evening with an opening prayer.
Mayor Jackson, before I pray, may I have a few words on prayer?
Yes, sir, you may.
Thank you so kindly. I want to say to you and to all of you that prayer is the most powerful thing that any of us can do. When we pray, we're not depending on ourselves. Oh, I need the mic? Okay. I want to say, can you hear me?
Yes.
The prayer is one of the most powerful things any of us can do. When we pray, we're not depending on ourselves. We're depending on God. We pray because we don't know what to do. We pray because we're overwhelmed by the world around us. We pray because God tells us to. We pray because of the example of Jesus. You don't need to go to school to learn how to pray. You don't need to have eloquent words in order to pray. You don't need anyone's permission to pray. All of us, regardless of whatever religious tradition we come from, all are able to pray. Jesus said, "Ask and it will be given to you; seek and you will find; knock and the door will be opened to you. For everyone who asks receives; he who seeks finds; and to him who knocks, the door will be opened." And when Jesus says this, He wants us to do this again and again and again. I want to say to all of you, pray for us. Pray for Mayor Jackson. Pray for your leaders. Pray for your enemies. Pray for yourself. Pray for your family. Pray for your friends. Pray for your community. Pray for your nation. Pray for the world we're in. And when you see God, answer your prayers, acknowledge Him, and thank Him. I'm glad to be able to pray, but I want all of you, in your own way, with words or with groans that your heart can't express, to use the opportunity God gives you yourself to pray to Him. Let's bow our heads and pray. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, we pray for our leaders. Guide them by Your Spirit. Give them a clear sense of purpose. Bless them with wisdom. Give them strength to stand against pressure and to do the things they need to do. Lord God, You have blessed us in so many ways. Help us to remember Your generosity and constantly to do the things You want us to do. Save us from violence, from discord and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil. Give us wisdom to know what is wrong and to avoid it. We ask, Lord, that with all the diversity in our community and our nation, that we would be united in the things that really matter. Help us to work well, not only with those who are our friends, but with those with whom we disagree. We lift up Mayor Jackson, along with President Trump and Governor Rauner. Give these individuals and others to whom we have entrusted the authority of government, the spirit of wisdom, that there may be justice and peace in our land. As we look at continued challenges in our own state government, in our community, in our own lives, we pray that our governor and legislators would work together for the good of the state. Do not let our trust in You fail. We pray that You'd be with the leaders of Glendale Heights and help them to set the right priorities for our community. Help them to know what is right. Give them courage to do what is right and give them strength to continue in what is right. As the leaders of Glendale Heights meet this evening, bless them in the decisions they make. Through Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Cass. Before we start with community announcements, I'd like to say, on Saturday, April 28th, a terrible tragedy struck members of the Glendale Heights community. We ask that you keep all of those affected in your prayers while they recover from this awful event. I would like to thank the Glendale Heights Police Department and the Glen Side Fire Protection District for their efforts during this accident. At this time, I would like to ask Chief Flint to please say a few words about this incident.
No, I don't. Russ will. So I'm just here to kind of give an update as to where we're at. Pastor Cass, actually, if I can call you back up here, if you don't mind, as this is a national day of prayer, I think it'd be relevant for Pastor Cass to maybe lead us in a prayer for all the victims from the fire on the 28th. Would you mind doing that?
Lord God, we pray that You would be with the 12 young individuals who were injured in a fire pit disaster last week. We pray that You'd be with the surgeons and doctors as they treat all of them. We thank You that there was no loss of life. We pray, Lord, that You'd give them peace and complete healing, that You'd especially be with those having severe burns. Thank You, Lord, that You protected them from losing any more than they did. We ask, Lord, that we learn from this and that You would keep all of us safe. In Your name we pray. Amen.
Well said, Pastor Cass. So initially, there was eight injured persons that went to local hospitals. Four more injured were found in the next couple of days. They brought themselves to local hospitals. They retreated to local hospitals and released. To date, we've interviewed 15 people that have been at the party. We have several interviews left to do. Investigation's ongoing. I really can't release too much, other than that we're actively working on it every day. We've got two detectives assigned to it full-time, and until they work through the processes, we really won't have much more to update anybody on. It's going to be a long road for all those that are involved, and there might not be new information for weeks or months. So with that...
Thank you.
Fire Chief Woods has got some other safety words of fire wisdom.
Thank you, Chief Flint. The accident that happened on last Saturday night gave us an opportunity now to have a teaching moment on fire pit safety. It's the beginning of the outdoor recreational season. We've got Memorial Day coming. There's outdoor barbecues and things like that. So we have a slide prepared here that's reminding people to keep fire pits at least 10 feet away. 25 feet is actually preferable to get that from a combustible surface. The charcoal grills should be at least 10 feet from the house, and there you'll see where it says the 25 feet on a fire pit from the house. The area should be clear of leaves and debris. Now certainly, we've got some rain in the last couple of days, but prior to that, it was very, very dry. So you need to have that area clear of any combustible material. Don't start a fire using gasoline. It's extremely combustible. There was a demo that the Glen Side Fire District did yesterday. There are videos available online, and most of the major news networks have those on their sites, so you could go to those and view a demo that we did at the firehouse that showed the effects of gasoline being added slowly to a fire pit. Imagine if that gas had been added quickly to a fire pit. Keep a fire extinguisher or water source nearby. Water source is as simple as just putting your garden hose where you can get to it easily. Don't light fires in windy conditions. We had that in the last few days as well. Maybe put off that outdoor fire if you wanted to do that. Keep the children away from fire pits and don't leave them unattended. And remember to teach your children, or even remember it yourself, that if you catch on fire, stop, drop, and roll. We've taught that for years. It's very important. And also remember to call 911 if a fire gets out of control or someone's burned. So Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. We're using this as a teaching moment from a tragic accident, and hopefully, some can learn from this.
Thank you very much, Russ. Now we'll go on with petitions and communications. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Treat Mom to her special day at the Glendale Lakes Mother's Day brunch. We will be hosting brunch on Sunday, May 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Brunch will include a carving and omelet station, various salads, breakfast and lunch entrees, children's items, and a sweets table. The cost is $29 for adults, $14.50 for children ages 5 through 12, and children 4 and under are free. Call today to make a reservation at 630-260-0095. On Monday, May 28th, Memorial Day, at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park, we will honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving our country. The Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 will conduct a brief fallen warrior ceremony, followed by a solemn wreath-laying ceremony. This includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, and patriotic acknowledgement. In observance of Memorial Day, village offices will be closed on Monday, May 28th. For more information, please call 630-909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights, in partnership with the FOP Lodge 52 and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, invite you to the 19th Annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Friday, June 15th, with a 9:00 a.m. shotgun start at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for Make-A-Wish Illinois, FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund. If you would like more information, wish to become a hall sponsor, or to make a raffle prize donation, please call Glendale Lakes Golf Club at 630-260-0018, or the mayor's office Help us make the 19th Annual Charity Golf Classic another great success. All the money that we raise from the Charity Golf Classic stays in Glendale Heights. Join us this Saturday, May 5th, at the Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Spring yard waste curb site collections are made on your regular or holiday-scheduled pickup days by Republic Services. All yard waste must be placed in either biodegradable paper bags or in cans clearly labeled "Yard Waste Only." Biodegradable paper bags or cans must not exceed 32 gallons in size and 50 pounds in weight. Brush must be in bundles not exceeding 4 feet in length, 2 feet in diameter, and 50 pounds in weight. Please remember that all single-family and multifamily residential units are required to utilize Republic Services for collection and disposal of refuge. When placing refuges and recycling totes outside for collection, containers are to be placed at curb side immediately adjacent to the street without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage or your recycling bins. The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a variety of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks and Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many others. Gain valuable experience and build friendships that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit the village's website or contact Human Resources at 630-909-5357.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your 2018-2019 Village Vehicle sticker now. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 a.m. July 1st, 2018, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18, and trucks with B-plates are $25. There's an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding Village Vehicle stickers, call 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Muratato?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on the street is prohibited during the month of May between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on various days throughout the week. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out what your zone is, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Summer is just around the corner, and the GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend on May 26th. Purchase your pool pass now through May 19th for discounted rates. Benefits to become a member includes priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and a discount on swim lessons, swim team registrations, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the sports hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Podeck?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
National Police Week begins Sunday, May 13th, and runs through Saturday, May 19th. To commemorate this week, the Glendale Heights Police Department will be handing out blue ribbons for residents to put on their vehicles as a symbol of respect to those who have laid down their lives in the line of duty and to show law -- support to law enforcement officers protecting our streets. May 15th is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and we hope you'll fly the blue ribbons on that day, as we honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving their communities. Blue ribbons are available at the police department. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroeder?
Thank you, Mayor Jackson.
You're welcome.
National Public Works Week is May 20th through the 26th, and the Village of Glendale Heights Public Works Department will be celebrating with a roadshow to local schools. They will explain what public works staff provides to the community and the equipment utilized to maintain village infrastructure. Thank you to the Public Works Department for all of your hard work, and thank you for helping educate our youth. For more information, please contact the Public Works Department at 630-260-6040. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Next thing is, I'd like to call for a public hearing on May 24th, 2018, at 7:25 p.m. by the mayor and Board of Trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018, and ending April 30th, 2019. So if everybody would please mark their calendars, that will be right before our next board meeting. So we don't miss anything. Next thing is a change in the village board and committee of the hall meeting dates for the month of June, from June 7th and 21st to June 14th and 28th. And we do that every year because there are no meetings in July, so that brings it closer to the August meeting. Everybody mark their calendars, please. Now we have several proclamations. First proclamation is to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. We have a proclamation to proclaim May 3rd, 2018, as National Day of Prayer. We have a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 6th through the 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week. We have a proclamation to proclaim May 13th through the 19th, 2018, as National Police Week. We have a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 20th through the 26th, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And we have a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 20th through the 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week. We also have a proclamation recognizing Queen Bee School District 16 Superintendent Victoria Tabbert, who is retiring at the end of the school year, and a proclamation recognizing Queen Bee School District 16 Teacher Laura Schrader, who is also retired. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Go for it.
Yep, no objections.
Okay, thank you. And now we have a special group with us tonight. Queen Bee School District 16, Markport Middle School District 15 Builders Club, and a Glimbardese Key Club student. And they are all sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights. And I believe Connie Barreras is out there. Oh, thanks, Connie. Sure.
For those of you who don't know, my name's Connie Barreras, and I'm the president of the Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights. We're a service organization that does volunteer work in the community, and our motto is serving the children of the world. So besides serving children in our community, we do service projects that affect children worldwide. And tonight, we want to recognize our builders' clubs, which are middle school students who do volunteer work in the community, and one of our key club members who are high school students who do service in the community. So the mayor will -- I'm going to do...
The mayor signed all these for the kids, but the mayor can't pronounce some of the names, so...
I'm going to call up the...
I could do this.
The teachers from Queen Bee District 16, first Glen Side Middle School, and then the principal, David Benson. Well, I'll say the names of the students from Queen Bee, since I'm not good at names either. Jennifer Simon is one of our teacher sponsors.
Thank you so much for your contribution.
And Jill Lowey is the other teacher sponsor.
Thank you.
And then Isabel Baldwin is the Kiwanis member who is our rep to the Glen Side Builders Club, but she couldn't be with us tonight. So at this time, I'd like to call up David Benson, read the kids' names, which you're all here waiting for.
Okay, I was going to say, I don't have David Benson next.
I don't get anything. Just the joy of working with these fine people.
I get it.
As a principal of Glen Side, I certainly want to express what Ms. Barreras said about service, and as parents in the audience, certainly, you should be very proud of your kids and the amount of service that they have given to the community, as well as the coordinators from Glen Side, as well as Markport today. I'm going to look over your shoulder, and then you can...
Oh, that's fine.
That's even fine. All right. So students, when you hear your name, come on up, and you can stand right to the left of Ms. Lowey. Saul Aguilar? Is he not here? All right. That's okay. Marisol Cano? Come on up, you can get the certificate.
Thank you for your work.
Congratulations, Marisol. And we'll have time for pictures, parents. Yami Chudhuri? Okay. Alyssa DiManuel? Peyton Formansky? Emily Guy? Hannah Grogan?
Congratulations.
Hannah, yeah, there you go, perfect. Kaylee Kazounas? Eduardo Ocampo? Rita Ocampo? Valeria Ocampo? Valeria. Valerio Campo, it's always the same, sorry. Chris Anthony Pedrosa. Chris Anthony here?
Here he comes.
Yeah, there he is.
Congratulations.
And Brian Zalea. Okay, if parents come up and take pictures now? Is that okay?
Of course.
Yeah, it's your show.
Yeah. Believe me, you don't say no to parents wanting to take pictures.
All right, parents.
Cole, you got people behind you.
We've been working with the Glenside Builders Club for three years, but we are new this year with a Markport Builders Club also that works in conjunction with their Student Council. So we're recognizing a few extra of their teachers and administrators, since this is their first time. So we'd like them to come up, and then we'll have one of them call the students' names. First one, our...the teacher who sponsors Builders Club is Brett Bandi, but she's not here tonight. Meredith Higgins, who is the principal at Markport Middle School, she's not here tonight, though. Mary Ellen Graff also is not here tonight, but we do have Superintendent for District 15, Dr. Jerry O'Shea, that's here to congratulate the students. And a Kiwanis member who works with the Markport students is Jimmy Barber.
Sure, wherever you want to do it.
Hey, students, Alexander Cuevas.
Thank you, I wasn't thinking.
Come up for pictures.
And finally, we'd like to recognize a student who is in Glendale Heights resident, who is a Key Club member at Glenbarr East, and their teacher sponsor is Jan Reese. And the student's name is Shamir Ahmed. And we'd like to invite all the students and parents downstairs to the training room. We have some goodies for you. And Shamir's gonna tell you a little bit about what he does in Key Club, which is the next step in the Kiwanis ladder. And so we hope all of you will join us downstairs. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for everything, the sponsors that are helping these kids. It's wonderful to get them involved in things in the community and helping other people because they're our future. Thank you so much for what you do. And thanks to all the recipients, thank you, kids. Anytime you're looking for something to do, we have lots of stuff. You want? Okay.
He who hesitates goes hungry.
Thank you. It's wonderful to see this room packed and everybody smiling.
Actually, pretty inspiring to see all the volunteerism at the middle school level. It's actually pretty...
It is.
Pretty neat.
Very nice.
Wow.
And all their parents here supporting them.
Malloy. About to be sergeant. I've met him a couple of times. He was the one who was supposed to set up the range for us downstairs, and then Mike and I couldn't make...
I didn't realize they had snacks for him. I was pretty worried about how much cake we were gonna have if they all stayed.
Yeah. You can see what... Lot of parents, lot of kids.
Very nice. This goal is to be you.
Your turn, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board. I'm here today to make a promotion to the rank of Sergeant for Officer/Detective Brad Malloy. Brad, could you come up here, please? Brad's promotion wouldn't be possible without the testing process put on by our police commissioners. Rick Schwordner and Vic McSeas are here. Thank you both very much for all the work you do and all the volunteering you do. Sincerely appreciated. Esther Wilk is not here today, right? Okay, so Esther's not here today, but her service is certainly warranted. So Brad is a 14 or so year employee, he was hired 12, 15 years? He was hired on December 30th of 2002. He's been a patrolman. He was transferred to the Investigations Division on January 1st of 2014, and he's been an investigator from 2014 until today. Brad has been our primary ICAC investigator, which is Internet Crimes Against Children investigator, and in the four years that Brad has been in investigations, he's actually initiated 39 cases for ICAC-type investigations, not just in Glendale Heights, but throughout the country. And actually, one case that Brad had, actually made it out to New Jersey. So these cases don't just all come local, the internet just kinda puts things everywhere. So Brad was actually able to track that case back to New Jersey and actually made a great case for New Jersey. So he's been instrumental in moving our ICAC investigations forward for the past four years, and hopefully we continue with that with somebody he's gonna train. Brad's also one of our primary range officers. He's a taser instructor and other weapons instructors. He's highly decorated, he's got numerous commendations and awards. He's also a 2009 AIM Award winner for how many DUIs he had while he was in the Patrol Division. Some of you probably don't know Brad because he spent his entire career on midnight shift, so you might not have seen him if you haven't seen him as part of being the detectives. He's here today with his wife Kathy, his kid's Faith, who's three, and Theo, who's one. They are both dressed handsomely and beautifully. Never seen a sport coat so short. His parents, Howard and Terry Malloy, are also here with him. Marie, if you can come up here? Kathy, if you can come up as well?
They're fine.
Yes.
Oh, look at how pretty she is. I'll sign it afterwards.
And just, this is, Brad is the third sergeant, we're promoting off the current list that we have. So we've had three promotions off this list.
Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Bradley H. Malloy, having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police...
I, Bradley H. Malloy, having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and the County of DuPage-a-Forsyth...
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and the County of DuPage-a-Forsyth...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police to the best of my ability...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Sergeant of Police to the best of my ability.
So while Kathy pins Brad, won't stick him. Brad's got a bachelor's degree from Illinois State University, he's a Redbird. He's also got a master's degree in forensic psychiatry from... Chicago School of Psychiatry. So he comes to us highly educated, well-trained. We got one more. Brad is gonna start on day shift, so you might see him for a while, then he's gonna rotate the afternoons, then he'll rotate the midnight shift, and probably spend the So Brad, I am honored and proud to call you Sergeant. You're gonna be a great addition to our sergeants. Brad is being promoted to replace Rhonda Kerstein when she does retire. Last day is gonna be at the end of the month, so we'll have something for her couple of board meetings from now. But she's gonna be retiring in the end of the month. We're promoting Brad so he can learn the ropes a little bit before she leaves, and Brad's gonna be a great addition to the ranks of Sergeant. Comes with a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, a lot of education, and proud to call you a Sergeant.
This meeting is recessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We now are at public discussion of agenda items. If there's any... If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, or quite honestly, if there's anybody that wants to address this board on any matter, there is no committee to hold them tonight, so if anybody would like to speak. Trusty Meritato.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking to see if, how the boy feels about eliminating his 12-year-old football tackle, football, and going to, going to a flag. I mean, the kids are gonna still learn how to, you know, the nature of the game, but I would like to do away with that 12, 12-year-old tackle team. I just wanna see how the boy feels, you know? You can look into it, or...
Just there.
I'm a football fan, big football fan, and I, I love tackle football. Maybe the Pee-wee or whatever you call them, little kids four and five years old, that's fine, but 12 years old, I'm in favor of tackling. That's football.
Sharon.
Actually, I kinda feel the same way Pat does, but I don't feel that it's a board decision to make. I think it's the parents' decision, and I think it's like denying the kids the ability to learn how to play football. And I know that's awful, and it's so funny that you said that, because on the Today Show, they've been having the football players on there, professional football players, talking about them having, you know, like Brett Favre was on there. Did you see that? You know who Brett Favre is? And, you know, they were talking about tackle football, but they even said if their sons wanna play, they, you know, they can't say don't, they don't want them to, but, I don't know. I really think that it's not a board decision to make.
Well, it isn't. What it is, is it's our program, you know, and some other villages are doing, are doing that. So I mean, we won't be the first one that, that is doing it. And sooner or later, they're gonna pass legislation somewhere in Springfield that are gonna ban, they're gonna ban 12-year-olds from playing football. I mean, I'm a football fan myself.
Yeah, me too.
But I mean, a 12-year-old kid is just, you know, the coaching staff on the sideline, we don't, I mean, there's no medical doctors or something, if this kid gets hit, I mean, the coach takes them out, then, then maybe the parents get mad because they take the kid out, put my kid back in. I mean, the liability could, could bite you. So, you know, I, I don't know, you know, just, you know, I mean...
I know.
Stuff to, you know, I mean, you got, you know, five more people on the board to make a decision, you know, so...
Just like soccer. They're trying to ban headers for their kids in soccer. That soccer ball's headed hard, and they hit the ball with their head, no helmets. You gonna ban soccer now?
I really think that you can get hurt in all sports, basketball.
Get hurt in cheerleading.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I feel bad saying that, because I, I wouldn't want my kids to play football either.
There's a, I guess I got a couple of things that I can add to some of what Pat said, some of what you said, too. Trusty Pojak, right now, they have banned headers for, and I'm gonna get the age wrong, I think it's for anybody that's 10 and under. They, yeah, they can't do that anymore. And there is a movement to, for exactly the same reason you said, that is one of the things that does cause concussions, and, you know, in this era of trying to protect the children from that, that's one of the things that obviously they're trying to do the most, and that's one of the things that, at least in, everybody that I know soccer-wise has done that, I believe it's 10 and under, it might be 12 and under, I'm not exactly sure on that, I apologize. I can find that out for you. In regards to the football and the program itself, one of the things that we've been running as the Sports Hub, our numbers for tackle football have declined. I'm not gonna say that it is all dealing with concussions. We're currently contacting everybody that's participated in our program over the last couple of years, because our signup has been so, so low that we might not even have a choice, we might not have a program, to be honest with you. But one of the things that we'll be looking at, if we don't have a program, is to offer some sort of program where you can continue to teach the basics of football. I think, I'm like the rest of you, I love to watch a good football game. I know of other communities that do not play tackle football until seventh grade. They just don't. And they're just as successful, one of the things that that's gonna require is to get buy-in from the high school coaches and the middle school coaches and the other people around that can say, hey, you know what? Because you can teach, you can teach children how to run routes and how to learn all those other things, but if you don't teach them the proper way to tackle, somebody gets injured and they never play again. And that's what the, a lot of coaches will tell you, that they lost some of the best athletes they would have because they didn't get taught properly. But I mean, we can certainly look into it, or, or try a different direction. It would just, it will, it will take an amount of time, and it'll take some trial and error to see what we can do, if that's what you wanna do.
So we don't have flag football right now?
We have flag.
For younger children.
We have flag for one year, and then it goes into, or one or two years, and then it goes into tackle football at, I believe, U8. Last year, we only had two teams. Our oldest team was a U9 team. So that's under nine-year-olds playing football in full gear. So if we were to add another team this year, we might have three tackle football teams if everybody signs up. I'll be honest with you, right now, I don't have enough for one football team.
With the new helmets that, the helmets that they have now, they're all padded. I'm a lot older than you guys. When I was playing football, we had, didn't even have a face mask till we got junior year in high school, I believe. And finally, I got a plastic face mask. The old helmets, there was no hardly any padding in there at all. And I got, I played a lot of football like that, even in the summertime, not just in the wintertime, but in the summertime.
I don't know, you know, kick it around, I mean, we got nine-year-olds playing tackle football. I, at this day and age, I think that's ridiculous. I mean, maybe...
I agree with that.
Maybe, maybe 10, 15 years ago, yeah, but today, I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. And like I say, I'm a football, football guy, but, I mean...
I'd like to say something. I have to agree with Pat. I think these children, like he said, there's no doctors on hand, there's nobody, there are something should happen. By the time the child got to the hospital or somebody came for him, I, I think that we could be responsible for a lot of things, and, and I feel that tackle for the young age could be eliminated without a problem.
I'm just thinking that kids from Glendale Heights attend high schools from, with kids from different communities. Carol Stream, Lombard, Glen Allen. Unless those programs also start doing away with tackling at the middle school level, you're gonna put kids from Glendale Heights at a competitive disadvantage. And speaking as a father of a son who went to college, played four years of Division III football, it, it was an incentive for him to study, it was an incentive for him to practice and play. I don't know that he would've had the same incentive if he started out way behind the other kids from other village, other municipalities. I just...
In time, in time, I think it's gonna be, I mean, that's the way it's gonna be, I mean, 12, I think, I think that's gonna be, I mean, like I said, a couple other villages already, already did, already knocked their program out.
Okay.
So I think in time, I think it's gonna be eliminated anyway.
If they're, the kids are on a level playing field that, you know, it's a state mandate, you know, nothing under 12 years old, okay, then they, they're on a level playing field. If we say we're gonna be the, the good guys and everybody around us is still playing tackle football, our kids are gonna be at a disadvantage.
Or the kids who wanna play tackle football are gonna go somewhere else.
Correct.
Right. Well, my question is, can we do a, just a quick check of surrounding communities and see which ones still offer tackle? See which ones still are, offer maybe a new flag football, and see if, how their programs maybe either, you know, grew or, you know, increased or decreased versus the change?
I can tell you right now, surrounding communities, with the exception of, well, Roselle doesn't have one, but every surrounding community has, is all part of BGYFL, they all have tackle football programs. The numbers are down everywhere. It doesn't matter where you're at, the numbers are down. The communities that don't have football today, and I only know this because I know the president of BGYFL well, the, the communities that don't have football today, don't have football because they don't have the numbers to play. Not because they're getting rid of tackle so much, they don't have, the numbers aren't there like numbers aren't here, and they just got rid of the programs. One town has had it since the beginning that they don't have tackle football until you reach seventh grade. That's systematic throughout that village, and if you play football in that village, that's what you do. And the, and all the high school coaches buy in, and they all feed into one high school. So I mean, there's a big difference there, because it's all the same.
As far as an increase, if, if there was a community that went from tackle to flag, was there an increase in their, in their, in their registration?
Well, the community that I know that, that went, went now 15 years ago, and they won a state championship this year, so there's no competitive disadvantage, they won a 7-8 championship in football, so...
What communities?
Potavia.
Oh, okay.
Right, but they, but that's...
But they did, but it was systematic. You are correct.
So if the direction of the board is, I think, is to look into this a little bit further, do some research on surrounding towns, we'll touch base with the Glenbard District.
Great.
High schools, and talk with the football coaches there, and get some input from that direction, and we'll get back to the board. Would you like that to come directly to the board, or would you like that to go to the Parks and Rec Committee first and have them look at that? I know, Trusty Meritato...
Yeah, have it go to, have it go to the, have it go to the Parks and Rec Committee, and then we'll take a look at it, and then we'll just present it to the board.
I will say the one thing that you, you might find an issue with, is if you only have enough kids sign up to have two teams, who are they gonna play?
Well, and that'll be all of what we'll be looking at when, when the Parks and Rec does a research.
Because there's no other towns that have flag football at those ages.
To me, there's no fun playing football if you can't tackle, you gotta grab a towel, you know?
Well, flag foot, don't, don't misconstrue, and I get everything you're saying. I'm just telling you from experience of a dad whose kids, and I've coached football forever. Flag football isn't non-contact.
Absolutely. I would concur. It's, there are, I mean, you're still playing football, so you're still running into people and doing everything that you did before. It's just, there's not tackle. But we'll certainly go back and do the, do that research and, and bring that back to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, that's great. That's good.
I got, I got one more thing from here.
Okay.
What are we doing with Burger King?
Yeah, what's happening?
I mean, that place been down now for a year. Tax revenue, we losing, not being open.
Yep. We have reached out to them repeatedly. We've asked them for the documentation that the Fire District and the building official have been asking them if they want to meet, to meet on-site, and they have not, their architect has not responded to the last three emails that we've sent.
Are they still working on the building?
Yes.
Here or so?
They are, they started work on the HVAC system and the hood, the hood system, the exhaust from the, the griller. And we asked them for plans for it, and they submitted plans, and it didn't comply with the code requirement, and the Fire District was very concerned. And so they, we said, this, we'll meet with you, we'll go on-site, and they haven't come back to us. So we'll continue to try to reach out. I'll be happy to let the board know where we are.
What are they doing in there now?
I don't see nothing going on.
Nothing right now.
Hey, dude, today, there was a bunch of guys working in there.
There were. Okay, I was not aware of that. We'll call them tomorrow, I'll call them tomorrow morning, and I'll let the Village Board know.
You know, originally, it was supposed to open up around March the 8th. So when, when they had given that particular date, I thought that the inside was completely renovated. To your, you know, to your satisfaction, obviously, it mustn't have been, but maybe to theirs, it was, and did you correct whatever we did like?
Right, the only, my understanding is the only outstanding issue is the hood.
So what's the problem?
We're waiting for them to give us the documentation that it meets the code. That's, that's all we're waiting for.
Maybe they're redesigning it.
It should be...
I mean, I've been hearing, I've been hearing about that vent for about six months now.
I know, I got a couple of phone calls, like, what's going on, Sharon? Is it gonna open or what?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what is the deal? I can't understand it.
I mean, the community development and the Fire District are obviously concerned about the code requirements and the safety of what they're doing there, because we're talking about venting gases and noxious fumes and so forth. So that, that's what their concern is, to make sure that that's vented correctly for the safety of those that are gonna be coming to the restaurant. I think there was actually an ownership change at one point.
There was.
While the building was down, so that, of course, added to the length of time that it's been closed. So again, Joanne, I'll, I'll check into that again, try and get in touch with the applicant and see if we can get a status of where they are.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, did we get any taxes from them just for having the property there, or not in operation?
Certainly do.
Good. We're getting something then.
We don't receive any food and beverage taxes while they're offline.
But we're still getting some taxes for the property.
Yes, sir.
Good. Do you wanna make sure of that?
To totally change the subject here, I attended the Arbor Day Ceremony with the preschool kids from the village here, and I wanted to praise Chuck Dobrowski and thank him for doing a fantastic job with the kids, getting them all involved. They planted a tree, and Chuck even named the tree for them. And I can see the kids coming back in, well, 20, 25 years, bringing their own kids and say, this is the tree that I planted. And I just wanted to shout out to Chuck and say thank you for everything that he does for us.
He does a great job every year for Arbor Day.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to Chuck as well.
What are you gonna ask?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, we haven't done the board business yet. I can't believe this.
Pass started a great conversation, it was all good.
Okay, you guys, that's enough. You have the consent agenda before you vote. Your pleasure. Trusty Sullivan.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trusty Schmidt?
Yes.
Trusty Sullivan?
Yes.
Trusty Light?
Yes.
Trusty Meritato?
Yes.
Trusty Pojak?
Yes.
Trusty Schroder?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Old business. Number one, is an ordinance rezoning and granting a planned unit development for the property commonly known as 59 West Army Trail Road in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and this was continued from the March 15, 2018 meeting. However, we have received from the petitioner a request to continue this issue, and the ordinance for rezoning the property to our June 14 meeting. So a motion would be in order to continue this to that meeting. Trusty Schmidt.
A move that we continue the consideration of the rezoning and granting a planned unit development for the property known as 59 West Army Trail Road until the June 14 meeting 2018.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That is continued, and now the next one which needs the same type action is an ordinance denying a planned unit development for the property commonly known as 59 West Army Trail Road in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, also continued from the March 15, 2018 meeting, and we need it to be at the meeting on June 14. Trusty Sullivan.
Motion to continue the plan unit, denying the planned unit development for the property commonly known as 59 West Army Trail Road in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, until June 14 meeting of 2018.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Both the ordinance to approve and the ordinance to deny our move to the June 14 meeting. Now we're at new business. Number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items number two and three. Trustee Schmidt?
Move that we waive first reading on new business items two and three.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? First reading is waived on two and three. Number two is an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit interior above-ground storage of flammable liquids located at 501 Mitchell Road in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this is ordinance 2018-24. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-24 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to waive bid, authorize the issuance of a notice of award, and authorize the execution of an agreement with Access One Incorporated for telephone primary rate interface circuits. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2018-25. Trustee Meritato?
So moved.
Second. Mayor?
Bill?
Holly, is there any, there seems to be quite a difference in the cost between what we are currently paying for service and the new contract. Are there any aspects of the current service that are going to be discontinued under the new contract?
No, not to the best of my knowledge. I've spoken to other communities that have this same company for their PRI circuits, some having more for several years, and they've not run into any problems. So they're just, they're the circuits that run our telephone system rather than POTS lines or the old different type of Centrix lines, and we can't identify any differences. It's highly competitive.
Great job, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-25 is approved. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board, please appear now. I had to save that. If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Go ahead, Trustee.
No, I said it once already.
Trustee Schroder?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Once is enough.
All those in favor? Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.